Two, Suzie can you call the rule?
Councilmember Campfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salsviel.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Finally here. A motion to approve the agenda for committee of the hall.
I'll make that motion to approve it today.
I'll support. Any changes? Sue.
Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salsviel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen councilor. No, all right, I'm that presentation light.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Tonight we are going to talk about the intersection of Main and Hudson. We've obviously for many years have been trying to get a left-hand turn signal going eastbound and westbound on Main. And it's a very difficult situation for M.D. in regards to traffic backups and all that. So what we did was we invited M.D. here tonight. They're going to be presenting their computer modulations, explaining their justifications, also talking about the traffic there. But then also, we can also maybe have a discussion about some type of options. There are options in that area we could consider. They might work, they might not. But wanted to at least kind of talk to you about some of those things. Tonight from M.D. is Art Green. Art Green is the district engineer for District Six, correct?
No, we're in Grand Rapids, C.S.C.
Okay, C.S.C., okay. Did I get TQ and you all messed up?
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Jason Cole, he's the, he's from M.D. He's in charge of the signals. Dennis Camp from M.D. is here as well. His son Tyler also works for M.D. I don't know the person in the back, I forgot your name again, I'm sorry.
Joe's the important one.
All right, I'll jump back DM with the signals unit in Lansing for M.D. but I handle the signal timing in the Grand region area.
I guess we might as well turn it over to Jason. And we met, I believe, at the beginning of August. And I don't know where you want to start. Do you want to start with the modulation or the traffic counts?
Yeah, we took counts back in March. Can you come up to the podium? So yeah, basically, we took counts out here in March. Morning, midday, no, we didn't have midday, morning and evening. And I believe two hours in the morning, two hours in the evening. And what Joe has is those counts put into software called Synchro. And analyzes with the existing timing that's at the signal. What we call level of service, which is based on the number of seconds of delay per vehicle that they experienced that intersection. And it's by each movement, the left turns, the throughs, the rights, for the whole intersection. Then the next thing we did, or Joe did, is added that left turn arrow to M-21 east and west, and then optimized that timing and to see what that would look like compared to what's out there today. The biggest issue is, you know, as we see it, you've got two, you know, we just drove through there coming here tonight, coming from Grand Rapids, we're going east on M-21. It was backed up to the railroad tracks, you know, we sat through that coming here. Hudson was also backed up south to that next signal, is that Bowes, I believe. So it's two very large volumes of traffic competing against each other, and they're competing for that same time at that signal. We do have left turn arrows for Hudson, which I'm not really sure when, you know, that was put in, it's been a few years, but that was before I was in this office, so. But basically, what we're struggling with is if we add left turn arrow to M-21, you're taking more time from either of those two larger movements on, you know, M-21 going through and Hudson going through. So it can be done, but it's not going to make things better. This is, I guess, what we're trying to get across to the council. And so I guess, I don't know, Joe, if you want to run? Yeah, so let me, I'm just going to, I'm just going to explain a little bit what I have going on. Oh, you're nice, okay. So I'm going to take you through, and I did four simulations. Two are going to be existing conditions, exactly what you have out there from the hours of four to five, and then five to six. And that just gave us a baseline to kind of see if we're getting close to what you guys actually have in real life out there. We want to get a calibrated existing condition model. So I took that to the best of my ability that we have, to model it the way we have out there. And then I took that and I added that phasing to east-west M-21 and compared the two essentially to show, you know, the impact of adding that phasing. So I'm going to take you through the videos, I'll try to talk you through what we're seeing as I show them. And then you guys can ask me questions once we get through and, you know, throw suggestions at me, and I can change some stuff and you guys can see what happens. So I'll run the first simulation. This is going to be time to model the existing operations from four to five o'clock at night. The way I have it modeled, I had it peeking right in the middle around 4:30-ish. And I'm going to speed this up a little bit so we can see it running.
Can I ask which one's Main Street?
Yeah, so Main Street is going to be the east, where the cursor is, that's Main. And Hudson is going to be this road here. So under the existing operations, we don't, in the four to five hour, we don't really have that northbound backup as a major problem. Our biggest issue is usually, if we look at this eastbound through movement, that seems to be the most problematic. So this kind of continues, we'll let it run here for another minute. And you can just kind of see the queue building northbound, but then eastbound kind of building a little bit. But as you see, like, if I go through this hour here a little bit more, scoot ahead, we end up getting a few problems. Nothing bad, this is kind of like, close to what I see when I've been out here very far. I'm sure it goes back a little further.
Looks like nobody's trying to turn left.
Yes, during the four to five, the volume is pretty low, and there's a very low opposing westbound through, so they kind of just flow through there. I mean, typically, when we were observing it, we saw three to five cars, and then they cleared typically on every cycle, maybe a bit late once in a while. So this is the existing four to five hour. This is basically just a baseline, so I can tell you what will happen in the future here once, if we change this. I don't know why this is. Okay. So I'm going to move on to the five to six hour. We can come back to this. This is just pretty much the same most of the rest of the way here.
So the video you're showing us is based on your counts?
Correct. From March. Yep, and that's what those numbers are out there.
Number of volumes of number of cars.
Yeah. For that one hour.
What I found amazing was, in that one hour, you never showed one semi trying to make a left-hand turn on M-21. You did show them on Hudson, and I know for a fact, there's trucks there all the time because my store sits there, and I can see it. And I don't see anything in your model, so.
We have a 10% heavy vehicle factor, which is pretty average for the state, that's in this simulation. There may be more at other times of the day, but we didn't see anything that stood out in the numbers and the counts. There aren't our trucks, but, well, they.
We did not differentiate commercial vehicles.
Correct. We had passengers with our counts, it was just totally. Just the other ones.
What I'm getting at is, the big trucks create a lot of the backup because they can't make the turn because they're so slow to get themselves up and move.
I think the backups are significantly more than you're showing. I mean, you're, we didn't see anything really more than a block, and it backs up two blocks to the railroad tracks.
It just backed up to Speedway when I was on my way here.
Yeah, I mean, it goes.
Well, that was at four to five, now you're showing five to six.
But four to five is worse than five to six.
I went through the five to six, between five and six, and was backed up past the railroad. Yeah. It'll go over here to the railroad track, I come back in and tell them my real job.
Ooh.
And I'll sit, I'll sit out on the bridge sometimes at the, and wait to come in. And I'll come in the back way, and they're backed up this way. So, I mean, I see what you're showing us, but I know what I see every day.
Yep, and like I said earlier, this is more of a comparison, like, I'm going to add on to this than the phasing. So this, this matters, but like, think of scale when you see this. Like, basically, I could calibrate this and fine tune this. This software is not designed to give you perfect calibrated models. It's going to basically show you scale when you add things. So I'll show you what happens and then, like, so know that, like, yes, you're describing a backup that's to here, so when I show you the future model's scale on top of it.
I was, I was a good front of Speedway just now. Want to try a few more?
Yep, so this northbound queue was not represented, I could not get it to represent what we see in the field.
You think the timing. That's way more than just four to six, that northbound backup. You go in and out of the station any time after two, and it's backed up past that sign that says do not block driveway.
Okay. So now, so you guys.
Just like one little park on the.
Yeah, exactly.
I was under the impression that the Hudson left turn lane was given to us by the county. Or is, is that who has?
North and south is K.C.R.C., correct.
Okay. Granted to us whatever the turn is.
Are you talking about the left turn arrow that's there now?
Yes.
That was.
When the bridge construction happened, as I recall.
When, when was that?
2010.
Why do you have 2000 there?
So this is a simulation with the phasing, this is from four to five, so we're backing up. You can remember the first, well, this is the hard part about these simulation videos, is having them side by side. This east-west, this eastbound is sizably more than in the existing condition model. So my fear with adding the phasing is that from four to five, we're going to start creating even larger backups than what you say back up to here. And we can then now see them, you know, back even further. If this scales out, you know, the way that it is showing in the models here.
So when you say that, we have a turn lane all the way down on M-21, correct?
Correct.
So why would, why would a turn light back up traffic if they're not sitting in that lane, if they're sitting in their turn lane?
They back up traffic more because they have to get time from somewhere. So like, I have to give time to them from someone else, and in this case, I can't take any time for anyone else, I have to add it to the intersection. So I add that time, yes, they will get more time, but then they will have to wait longer too, to get their turn. So that gives a longer delay for the user of the intersection.
Your simulation looks like it adds about 50% to the backup.
Yep, and that's kind of what I was saying.
That'd be a problem.
Yeah. So, and I'm going to show you the five to six here, real quick. In this model, the big problem becomes more than northbound, which we've already, Jason and I have made some tweaks out there in the summer here already to try to help that. Didn't really help too much, so I get really concerned when I, especially when I saw, you start seeing it backing up even further. And like, in the models that I had shown you before, this was like somewhere in here. So it's doubling the queue in my model. What that will do in real life, if it's scalable, it will be even further, you know, back than what you see now heading northbound, you know, from four to six P.M. or three to six P.M.
There's a left turn light at Bowes, right, isn't there?
Yes.
The turn on to Bowes?
Yes.
So what if you just took the left turn light off the north-south and put it on the east-west?
Well, I have noticed a lot more cars turning left on to Bowes.
Yes.
To alleviate that issue.
To go up and.
But it still doesn't stop the flow that has to go straight.
Right, but yeah, but you wouldn't be tampering with the north-south, you'd only be tampering with the left turn light. You just switch, flip the light. I don't know. What's the solution then to this problem, if it's not a left turn light?
Well, I feel the reality is, you need more passing on the road, but, which means more lanes, but that's.
You can't make it through downtown. Do you know how many accidents we had in that?
No.
At the intersection?
Because nobody gets home fast enough.
The only thing that I really noticed sitting there, I had several traffic lights and just watching it, when cars aren't turning left from east to northbound, that even though the first car gets through, there's at least two, maybe sometimes even three other cars attempt to go through that, that yellow light or red light now, thus causing delays toward the north-south traffic. So even if you were to put a left turn light there, you're probably going to get your three or four, but now you're probably going to run with the same, two extra cars are going to run it now because I've got that, so I don't know how that plays into relieving some of that left turn traffic there.
Yeah.
Because I still have to wait for those other two cars to go.
Even if you widen M-21, it's not going to help if you can't widen it through downtown. If you go from two lanes down to one, there's no way to widen it down here, there's not room. Plus, you want to try to get four lanes to stop at these crosswalks when two lanes already won't stop. It'd be a nightmare. Close the road, I guess.
So, well, like we're talking about, is there other places that people can turn left to get bypass that intersection and do stuff like that? Personally, if I was going, I'd probably turn left way back by Myers.
Yep.
You go up around, come down, and then go out.
A lot of people, a lot of people I've talked to do that, they turn at Myers and break Bowes road up and around. Because, to get where me and Greg are at, because they can just go down Foreman and then back road through.
Correct.
The middle school's at. I'm not on M-21 at all for this little stretch, but they'll go this way too, from all that it presents, because they've got a light there.
I think local residents, a lot of that traffic is.
The problem is, right, and the people who aren't local that are doing it are not on M-25 down Foreman. They're in the school year, that's a huge problem.
So we did have that conversation about some of those options when we met. And something we talked about at length, which may or may not be palatable, but it's just in concept, was, because if you look now, just look at the back of going north and south on. Maybe instead of putting a middle lane like that, maybe, maybe putting two lanes of traffic going northbound, one lane going southbound. And then, one of the other issues we talked about in concept was, in the morning, in the morning peak hours, we talked about you would have, you would have two lanes going northbound all the way going north, and you'd have one going south, but, you know, if there was a way to divert traffic, say down, and then this is a residential street, so it could be, you know, it may not even work, but the thought process was maybe bringing traffic through, what's that, Chatham, down to Amity. And so we would eliminate the left-hand turn here, put the, maybe put a left-hand turn over at Amity, and then you can make a left-hand turn out there and alleviate, you know, it alleviates that intersection, but the problem with that is, obviously, you're going to have more cars going through the neighborhood, but that's.
What we used to have, Hudson used to be four-lane.
Okay.
Yep. For a long time, that was four-lane coming in, and then it got taken away and came one in, one out with that turn light all the way down.
Right.
Yeah, but going northbound, where do you put it back down normally? Because you have to go up through, evaluate the parking and all that stuff, because there's not room for four-lane.
I would say it would be.
Edward Day.
Well, I would say at Godfrey. What you have to say about us?
Thank you for the fellowship throughout my life, yeah. But my entire life of living here, that's the traffic flow that we deal with every day.
And the issue is, is as this area continues to grow, that's going to continue to back up, it's not going away.
No matter what you do on the Hudson to the north, the light is still a restrictor.
Now.
There's, if I may, there's probably a, you know, a short-term plan, mid-range plan, and maybe a longer plan. One of the things that sticks out, to look at the area a little higher scale, fly up in the helicopter a little bit further, is there's a very limited amount of crossings in the river. And so what's not happening, or being allowed to happen right now, is kind of the diversity of traffic east-west, they don't have many options, so even on the local system, there's not many options to do this, this movement. So there's probably a few small things, or, you know, even more economical things that we talked about, that we could do, but that's kind of a short-term plan. The longer-term plan is trying to figure out what kind of resourcing makes sense, what kind of street, you know, mapping, modeling, what does the next, you know, transportation phase of Lowell will look like when it comes to defining another east-west corridor somewhere? And what kind of resources have to be put in place to get that kind of a crossing to happen? How far away is that from the Main Street? Is it, you know, is it, you know, north or south? I'm hoping it'd probably be a little north. And try to beat yourself through this, you know, one step at a time, because maybe with a, with, you know, some kind of plan to show folks that there's a longer range effort maybe in play, you know, you can work with some of the shorter-term, you know, what maybe in folks' minds not the best situation, you know, for everyone. Because you're right, I think Lowell certainly is growing, and it's certainly doing different things than it probably ever has. This is a good thing. But I think it might be time to step back and look at a couple key pieces to the mobility in the area. You know, that's not just cars and trucks, but, you know, they create some other pathways for, you know, other modes of traffic as well, and we talk about crossing rivers. So it's a really big deal to think about as the next step, and I think you could probably use some of that thinking, you know, to help bolster support.
Good example of that, was the Jupiter Bridge crossing there in the Grand, and how it reduced that traffic when you used to fight it over there and.
That was, that's, that's an excellent point. When, M-37 Northland Drive, M-44, I guess it is.
Yeah.
When that started, you know, getting so bad, the intersection at Plainfield and that, started backing up real bad, couldn't get anywhere, the Connecticut Road Commission was thinking of this type of an effort, and then, and I was back, geez, probably 2000, early 2000s, 2005, six, somewhere in there, they added, you know, that Jupiter Bridge. And that, of course, diversified traffic, but it also created some different patterns and some different economic decisions for the area to, you know, there's little, little birds and stuff that weren't necessarily as, you know, hustling and bustling, and all of a sudden, it became very hustling and bustling because it was more of a direct route, because people had another alternate.
Yeah, they got to put up some nice home developments there too.
It all has, and that's part of it, that's exactly part of it, is what happens, what's the next step, and what does that mean?
So between here and Andy, you'd like to see a couple of Berber crossings, and maybe that takes some of that flow off the Grand River?
Well, I don't know, but Art Green wants to see them, but I think it's one of these things I look at, you're talking about Foreman and connectivity, you've got some natural, you know, blocks here, and you might want to think about over time, how are we going to do this? You know, is it, is it Howard across, is it Foreman across? Is there a connector that has, that could be built here to get you over to wherever? It's, it's not just easy to put your finger on a map, because, you know, there's been development that's already created itself, you've got some traffic patterns that have generated themselves, two different areas, and I think you want to try to, you know, take advantage of those, but at the same time, it provides some connectivity in the network. Because that's what stands out, I mean, just stands out so clearly, is folks that are trying, maybe just, they have limited opportunities to get east or to get west, depending on which time in the day it is. And as a consequence of that, north and south can't move either, because, you know, there's, there's that conflict with traffic. And there's certainly, you know, Grand River and all that, but, you know, there's, again, limited opportunities to get back north and south, take Grand River, you know, so it's just sitting down, I think, and doing some, you know, a little bit of traffic modeling and mapping as a city, even at a high level, to understand, you know, what can we do now? But then with that future plan in mind to help bolster support for the now plan, because that's kind of what. Now, again, a couple things we talked about, we talked about maybe one-way pairs.
Correct.
So if you, you know, kind of zoom, zoom out a little bit there, I don't know, Joe will paint your map, or you can use.
It's not too big, but.
That's okay.
All right.
But so the idea is, is if you can clear, you know, a northbound path, what the suggestion was, is you wouldn't potentially have many southbound, you know, traffic, it can then be one option. Use, I'm just wondering if there's an example, take Amity, somewhere, if you're heading southbound on Hudson, and you want to, you know, you want to go through this intersection, we're here to be diverted, and you're going to have to, you know, turn to the right and take Amity down, and you'll probably place some kind of a signal at Amity, and then you would go wherever you needed to go, rights, lefts, whatever you needed to do. But what that does is it splits up, it takes a significant amount of time away from the signal, so you can run all that traffic one way at a lot longer rate than, you know, or give more time back to the east-west than you need to, because you're reducing all the time in the intersection toll. Now, that obviously has some consequences, has some things to think about, but what I've just said doesn't mean I have to build a new road, right? I mean, it's changing how we do some small things, pavement markings, maybe some, you know, dividers and that kind of thing, so you're not actually reconstructing miles of road, doing all these things. So there are things you can think about that are somewhat economic, but, you know, you may have some traffic calming to do, you may have some other things that I want to think about. There's some other connectors to make more, you know, fluent connecting on the south side, you know, to make that a little bit easier, better, more attractive, whatever you want to put signs up to the business district or to the, you know, the box store district side, I'm not sure, but there's, you know, definitely things to think about. Just to, just to kind of support Art, when I came over here today about 5:30, 5:45, somewhere, I was, probably about 5:15, there was literally nobody either direction wanting to turn left at the intersection, east and west. Where they were turning, I sat through three or four signals, so you get opportunity to look at what's going on. There were a lot of left turns already occurring at Amity. So people are already finding that and going up and following to see how far, I don't know if they're going up to the school, going past, going up to the middle school, going past the middle school. There's kind of a missing connection of the Foreman that might be interesting to have a discussion about extending Amity up that far. But, I mean, you can get there now, you just have to make a couple of turns and take another road. You know, the grid is there, it's a matter of, you know, what people are able to, you know, tolerate as far as, kind of different traffic, traffic pattern. We can't put any more cars than Amity right now until we get funding to fix it, it's in bad shape. Plus, there's supposed to be another school there. So back roads are already.
Oh, I'm just, I'm kind of telling you the concept, I don't know, you know, that the local, you know, things are all new, looking at this grid, say, okay, if we need to generate time at this intersection for now, to get to a different plan or a more robust plan for transportation, how do we accomplish that without spending hootles of dollars and reworking the whole network? Because that might as well be the long-term plan if you're going to do that, right?
There's a box office right in front of my house at Eldon Lincoln Lane, and that was put in because people were using that as a bypass to Hudson, and they were flying down it, and there was a park at schools and residential. And you're going to have the same problem on Amity if you start diverting Hudson traffic because everyone's going to say, well, this is a quicker way. They're not going to go 25, we don't have a place to enforce it with the staff they have now, so what do you do? You just let people fly through there?
Put speed bumps in, that slows you down. Question, the eastbound traffic on Main Street seems to be a big problem in the four-to-five range, that that backs up two to three blocks. Does your study show at the light that 20% are going south, 20% are going north, and 60% are going through? Do we have an idea what that ratio is?
From four to five, is this?
Just give us an idea of what direction we're trying to get to.
Oh, you had the arrow showing in the counts.
Yeah. Straight up, right? Everybody better. Five.
What is the duration of the time from, I'm in the left lane, and I'm going to go eastbound, and it's three cycles? Is that four minutes that the light changes all four cycles or?
Cycles a minute and a half. 80% are going straight. 548, and I believe it's less than that, maybe 30%.
548, and then, well, maybe less than that, maybe 80%.
Steve's on that area, he could hear that. It's a 90 second.
Because I don't quite understand it, because there are no traffic lights heading eastbound once you get through that intersection. And then when you're heading westbound, the next traffic light is where up at Eldon Nash. So I, and northbound, there's no lights going out of town, the other one is both. So I don't quite understand why there's such a jam there with nothing really to delay the traffic once you get through the light. Is it, you're only letting 20 cars through every cycle, or maybe that's not what you're letting, but that's what the John Q. Public is only allowing 20 cars, because that's how they run. So I don't understand.
This, this picture kind of tells you a little bit of the story about, you know, and as you get to the next, you know, next peak hour, you'll see, you know, that even more, that you have, relatively speaking, the same number of cars wanting to go both east-west and north-south, so they're all vying for that time. They put in, you know, you put in the, you know, the dedicated lefts on Hudson, so that's taking some of that time, so the left turns get their own phase. So you're, you're really, you know, crunching down how much time that those through movements have. And our argument is, is if you put them in on 21, that's gonna further slice that pie up, so that 90 seconds, it turns into a lot less, even for, for your east and west through movement. So that's, so now you can look at a different clock, like if you sit in 90, go to 120, I'm sure you looked at those things, right?
Yep. So the best way I think I can explain what you're getting at here, when you do the signal timing analysis, there's like a sweet spot where you go beyond that and you start giving more green time, you actually get diminishing delay results for your vehicles. Because if you're giving someone more green time, someone's waiting in the opposite direction. So they turn out waiting longer then, so the delay goes up for that car. So when we slice up the time, we pick these times, we're kind of finding a middle point, and right now, 90 seconds is that point. And actually, if we add the phase, it goes into 100 seconds, based on federal minimums for times that we have. So we're kind of just in a crunch here a little bit. We're hitting exactly the sweet spot, and it's still not good, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does.
Okay.
I know you mandated it, how many seconds you could add that light hanging there.
Yeah. So the idea is to look at this box with the, with the numbers, the idea of diversifying, go to like a one-way pairs type idea, whichever you choose, I'm just throwing this out here for discussion, is you then would take one of those directions to travel and take it right out of the picture. They're not going through that signal. So if they're not going through that signal, it's kind of like giving 25% of the time back to the signal. And that's, that's a huge, then you'll start clearing, your backups will like, will only be the block long, which is, you know, probably fairly normal. And, you know, life goes on until you get more traffic to start gonna, you know, keep rippling that effect back. So those, that was just a quick thought process. Now, there's probably a lot more that can be done, but you're gonna be in more significant progress.
To get to the numbers in the green boxes, how many days did the count go? Was that a one day? What time in the morning were you there?
I think you guys did seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
Yep, seven to nine in the morning, and then we did.
I think it did three, three to six.
Three to six in the afternoon.
Yep. Out of one day, this was.
I had to count today.
About a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. We don't do it on the weekends, we don't try not to do Mondays and Fridays, because traffic's usually a little bit different.
Oh, and then we've also counted this since 2011 or so, we've counted it almost every year, and it's always in a different time period. So we've got a pretty good backlog of data to compare to, and it does fluctuate, like, you know, over the years, it's went up and down.
And it's probably busier out there right now than it was in March. I mean, just because this time of year, and school's back in session, and it probably is a little different, it'll fluctuate, but.
Once school comes back in, roads get just terribly busy. When school's not in, the relative count, yeah.
I mean, this was the middle of March, so school would have been in session, but, and it was a weekday.
But it was snowing. It was, it was cold and snowy, people were not traveling, and just they do now.
Yeah, I mean, relatively, yes.
Question, in this four to five and five to six, our eastbound is the biggest number, and that's where we're seeing our biggest backup. Can we put signage up back, like by Bowles Road, downtown bypass, and try to educate people that they could slip around and come across here and come back in by Kaisers and take some, I mean, that's the answer.
Well, I notice that, though. Jackson Street Bridge has gotten busier, because I take it all the time, because it leaves me from coming downtown, but that's even getting a lot of traffic. And then when you do come up to Jackson, I probably see a lot more cars now turning to left than they do right, so they're trying to avoid that just to go on.
So you get a little backup there when you go back on the main.
Four or five cars, but it's not too bad usually.
That's probably our short-term answer, is try to find a way to divert people to other roads that don't involve the main drag.
Well, true, I understand that. At the same time, my intuition's telling me that there's a lot of smart drivers out there. As a testament, as a testament, all your life has been the same, right? So the, the thing is, is the waiting in line doesn't seem quite yet like it's harder than going around doing all the other stuff. Mostly because they're probably getting to other nodes where they have to turn left, or do something where they have to wait anyway. And that's just a leveling thing, that annually you're gonna have to look at, you know, as a system and say, all right, well, you know, are we gonna have to look at, if we make that decision to permanently divert, that's the only way that you're gonna get to the point where you can actually make an argument for another control device, like a signal or something. Because if you don't have a must-do, most of the time, you're gonna have, well, maybe I won't. And then you don't have reliable data that justify a control system. So it's, it's, it's quite a difficult thing to think through unless you're, you know, looking at it as a map and trying to manage where you want folks to go and traverse.
Yeah, a lot of people, I think, take that Valley Vista to Bowles Detour, I don't know why, because they have like going through here. But that would take care of the 78 turning right in particular, and it might, yeah, and I don't know what it would do specifically to those turning left, but I suppose some could, you know, go down to Bowles and turn left and go north, but you might get stopped at the signal, you know, going through.
Your other option really is if you're going there, is jump on all of Nash and go to G.
Yep.
If you wanna go out of town.
Those work.
It's a, it's a tough one, because, you know, there's been a lot down, downtown to redevelop it and rebuild it, and that's probably what a lot of people really want to be, so that's what they're trying to do.
The other problem is that kind of this, you know, it's so light, it's so short, that you can't, that's what I'm understanding, where people get hit down there. This is Valley Vista, people go north and south, they're trying to beat that short light. So if you're coming into town, and you're trying to wind to north by all that, and you come down Bowles to Valley Vista, then that's gonna start backing up, because it's a, it's a really short light. You're only gonna get one or two, especially if you're trying to turn left. So what are you doing? You're moving the backup somewhere else?
I think we could take a look at that light at that time, because right now, the lights were set up to around coordinated east-west. And if we can change that, that at the time was the best scenario, but that may change, you know, if we get some time changes out here, so.
There have been a lot of accidents, pedestrians trying to cross and stuff there. Looking at that, a longer cycle, that might help us. Really, it's a physical restriction, that you can't fix up with the light.
It's just, any modifications you do.
Hurt you.
They're, they're just gonna be, they're gonna create other problems, is what, you know, I mean. Can you scroll down just a little bit? Like, for example, we were talking about this the other day. Right here, I don't know how far it goes, but like right there, just south of Amity, that's technically a street plaque. And I don't know how, where that ends at, but I mean, if there was a way to like connect that.
It goes between the two buildings, I'll kind of vary all by, ultimately.
So does the street plaque continue all the way down, or just?
Stops at the railroad track.
stops at each one.
At each one, but technically, it's still a street.
Right.
But it's just unimproved.
Right. The only, I mean, I don't, you'd have to, it'd be difficult to do, but I mean, in a perfect world, put a street through there, and you diverted something out of it, but it... And like, because that's just in a perfect world, it's not, there could be a lot of things you'd have to do just to get that street cleared, but it would be another, it would be another avenue, so to speak.
Yeah, the other discussion we had the other day was, do we draw the way we use, a couple moments between the.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so that would, you know, that would set itself up to be, you know, one of the directions too, if you wanted to go that, that type of road and try to relieve some of the time involved.
For a right now.
We just turned that into.
Right, yeah.
We're not on that path. The certain traffic along makes that not work, but that's why we did it the way we did it with Bowles.
And you're seeing semi-traffic.
Being removed.
Managed, you've managed that better by doing that.
If it takes 25 trucks a day or something off the main street.
Oh, yeah, it takes a, takes a lot off Main Street, takes a lot off Hudson.
Also, trying to turn left to go south.
Right. Cliff, you got any questions?
It's really discouraging.
It's just gonna get worse.
Right.
Yep.
Well, unfortunately, the development, the townships around us, people are coming through low to get to their homes and go up there.
We talked about that too. I mean, the perfect world solution would be to have a bridge cross the river down by Ternell, connect from Grand River to north and south, but like I said, that's a perfect world.
That bridge has been talked about over the years.
That's what I hear.
I, I do have a question. I go, I drive trucks for a living, so I'm all over the state, and I'm on a lot of M dot roads. And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember what M dot road it is I'm on, I was on. And I've seen it other places, and they weren't M dot roads, but they'll have a turn, and you can flow east. And westbound sits, then this light changes, and then westbound flows, and they make all their turns, and that cycle continues. Before they did that, I used to have to make deliveries down there, and it was a friggin nightmare to get anywhere. And that allevied a huge amongst of the problem. So has that been looked at? I mean.
I think you said split facing.
Indirect lefts, maybe, is that?
No, split facing.
Oh, that's kind of split facing, the same. Yeah, we've looked at the split facing operation, that ends up blowing up your delay even worse. The main reason is because I have to, those minimum federal times that I talk about, those are for pedestrian clearance intervals, and then I have to account for four of those instead of two currently, because the east-west runs simultaneously and north-south, so those all get impacted together, and we split them all out, I have to do either four separately or three if we just split out two directions and leave one simultaneous. So that in itself adds more time, which will just create delay. I would say generally, you kind of have to have some unique traffic patterns for that to be a good solution. Because it's a very, it's a very inefficient way to run a signal, because.
Patterson and 36 says that.
Yeah.
Like out by the airport.
Yep.
Everything's going, everything's going.
But when you say it's gonna create delay, we hear this a lot now. A minute, two minutes?
Let me see if I have one.
Five minutes?
I did.
I think a lot of the problem, and I don't even know how to phrase it, is people's perception is like they don't have a fair chance.
Right.
Turn left, even if the statistics would say this is happening. Is there some kind of way we can fool them to think?
Yeah, because I personally, I avoid turning left on Main Street. It just, it's not gonna happen. Well, that's, that's an interesting, and that's another thing we talked about doing, and we've got the, like, what Jason recommended with indirect turning. We can decide that the intersection just doesn't have left turning at all, and people have to figure out what to do with that. You can make it easy and build indirect turns for them. Main Street, you know, as you get to the, further to the east, it's more difficult to do indirect turning. The western may be able to pull it off with one of them, but that's definitely an alternative. This is all, you know, this is a through-only intersection, I'm sorry, but if you wanna turn left and go somewhere, then you're gonna have to figure that out. That, that is another option that's out there, but that's, again, something to look at with your network, and say, okay, you know.
But that just takes the problem and.
I think.
I don't know for that problem, but it'll definitely take left turning, well, just like Dennis said, just in the case of using Amity, they're already doing it. So did you take it anywhere? Nope. It's still there. So the issue is, is then you, maybe for more of a non-congestive time frame, you're maybe just taking away the most efficient move. So that's just something that if you could look at and say, well, there's intersections where you have to do that, just because. Now, that's what like the old belt line decided on that premise, that everything is right-hand turn, there's no left directly, you have to do that indirectly. In this case, because of your limited space, you might not be able to do the indirect turn where you want to. You may just have to eliminate it and say, well, you've got the city grid to go do what you wanna do.
Northbound, I don't see it being an issue, but southbound, if only one or two river crossings, it would be pretty difficult to swing back around and I'd like to see that happen.
So did you figure out the?
Yes. So I'll, I'll scoot back just for a second to show you the other models, but here's the quick split face, and this isn't even accounting for, like, these would have to be larger actually, to meet federal minimums. I think they have to be like 36 seconds at this intersection for north-south. So that's already dropped our delay, I believe, by 130 seconds, which is an impressive amount to do. Uh, let me show you delay in the other. So in the same scenario with the left turn phasing even all around, we're only at a level service D in both the four to five hour and the five to six. So by splitting things out, we're, yeah, we're definitely making the delay go up quite a bit.
By 2.26 seconds or minutes?
Yeah, two minutes and 10 seconds.
Yeah, is what the delay backup would be.
For each color.
For each color.
Yeah.
So I know we've talked about this internally, but I'm gonna throw the question out anyway. I know it probably is difficult in this intersection, but what a roundabout, would it?
Easily.
Would it, I mean, would it, if done, could it reduce? It would make the traffic times?
No.
Or the through times, or?
No, they're the worst.
Take him.
I, I don't know, but.
I mean, I, maybe, but I just don't know how you have the room to.
That, all right, that's the issue.
Why I agree. You're, I mean, you're probably wiping out all four corners.
Yes. Those little green boxes are.
Yeah, no more fun.
No, right. I just sit outside and I'm just yelling at people in the roundabout.
I'm surprised that the, the bulk is the straight. I wasn't expecting it to be that big a difference. I mean, I know it's more than.
You're talking about going east?
Yeah.
Yeah. 76% of that.
Guaranteed, in the morning, southbound off of that is a lot busier than.
Yeah, and there's another 240 cars going east, south left.